We're talking is different. Everyone on the list, which one we go with? Yeah, the pastor. So it's like.
John Schwab was not reading today, so you'll need.
I'm in there. Yeah, that time. I'm a phone now. Is that the conservation board?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So he is where? We're getting there.
Nine twenty-five.
What's gonna happen? Number nine. The eye of nine, nine and ten, I guess. Okay. Okay, I think it takes thirty for my phone, so the call is meeting to order, and a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
Yeah, with um, with the amendment of uh, number actually nine twenty-five. We'll then that take that out.
John Swob, John is here, so we'll do a motion to approve the amendment of agenda minus John Swob's presentation.
A second.
All of the favors.
Aye.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, or when it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, public comment, public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Say your name. Sit on.
Yes. Uh, Marty Mayer from M G, H County landowners up. I wanted to encourage uh, board supervisors to move forward with importance. I'm talking about the uh, some pipeline that's going through the western edge of H County. You need to start moving on that. I know you've got a big agenda and you have a lot of items. But if you were say to put this on next week's agenda, and if you were to prove, well, it's gonna be another week before anything happens. And this gets time involved. Montgomery County has spent six months on this. And that may be due to their bureaucracy, I'm not sure. But nevertheless, I don't know how many readings your zoning commission requires, how many readings it requires at the supervisor's table. So this is a time uh, consuming process. And I'd really urge you to get it on the agenda and get the ball rolling. I know it's not going to be a quick deal, but it's, we gotta get started on this if we're going to get it done. Originally, uh, some carbon expected things to uh, come to a head in the middle of March, so that's been pushed back. Or not, don't know for sure whether it's, when it's going to be, whether it may be June, July, or May, or August, I don't know. But nevertheless, there's an urgent need to get moving on this. Interestingly, in response to this, we're not in response to it, but some carbon will not release their safety information. They have data as far as the plume effect, where it's gonna go, what it'll do. They won't release that to the utilities board, because they said it's not an issue that of safety that the utilities board should look at or consider deciding pipeline, which sounds ridiculous to me, but that seems to be their position. Consequently, that's all more issue, all the more of an interest for the local counties to take up the safety requirements with setbacks and such. One of the things that, and if you've read the uh, Shelby County ordinance, there's an issue in there, and an issue or an item where some carbon is going to be contributing every year to the expense of upgrading the first responders. Because they've got to upgrade their equipment to be able to deal with this, because there's nothing like this in the area. And so there's gonna be ongoing expenses, there's gonna be training and equipment. That's part of this ordinance, so it benefits the county to get this in place for that money to keep this thing rolling. Lastly, you know, if nothing gets done before they go to imminent domain. Why, you know, the county may end up being liable if there's a release. And you know, I mean, if I'm already know you're being sued by one set of people from one side of the county. And I suppose if the county does nothing, then it would have to be released as possible, there could be a lawsuit from the other side of the county. So for all those reasons, I would urge you, please start the ball rolling. I know you got a big agenda, but start the ball rolling. Maybe your agenda will lessen as you get a little farther away from the first year, uh, but we've gotta get started. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for my hand, my card.
Al. Go ahead.
Tom Wagner, I just wanna say thank you for the work you guys have to do. Hopefully you do fill out your complete term, and hopefully you do listen to the people. I have been here in the past. Uh, took a few months to finally get some action taken. I've been denied to be on the agenda. But I would like to say the people this county, they do speak. I've received comments from people in person, I've received correspondence in the mail. The issues on M sixty-three, statements have been made. Uh, thank you for not letting those issues get swept under the rug. That's a correct quote. And so I'm saying, thank you for the work you do, and hopefully you do listen to the taxpayers, residents of the county. Thank you.
Any else? Yeah. It's like an option, we're gonna go on. There we go. Anybody online? Our next item on the agenda is the engineer update. J D, you ready?
Good morning, J D King, Bates County. Fine day in Bates County, a day close from spring. Back to the bike, spring-like weather yesterday almost, but it's still winter time. And there's a topical four, perhaps forecast, so later this week, and we'll just see what happens. But the blades are out in the district, we did have some work down on J fifty-three to try to just smooth up some of those rough areas we are hauling off with three trucks. At ten spots today, there are various locations. The uh, the excavator with the shear and the grappler are working down at Shamla on the uh, the old, old seventy-one on the west side there, and we have other brush crews cutting sidelines at intersections various locations in the southern part of the county. And uh, and just a reminder that when the conditions are suitable, in other words, it's frozen, dirt roads are frozen or they're dried out, we'll get to the deck replacement there on the eight twenties. The uh, the superstructure been put back together, we fixed the substructure there, but we need to put the deck on. We're having some electrical issues with our belly belt trailers with the cold. Motorator service scheduled for number one and number four this week. Right now, all the pile trucks are here, we don't have any tanks in Omaha. At least today, there is a boom or tractor in Atlantic at Ziegler's, it's our boom or there was some pressure in the coolant system, so it's a cracked head or a head gasket or something, so they're working on that. And uh, there's tire work going on.
On there. Just real quick, is there a reason you don't go down to Maryville, Ziegler's down there? Is there a reason, but over Atlanta? Just so.
Is that?
Ziegler's at Maryville, right there.
Is it Ag or construction boat?
It's Ag, my tractor would be. I just was wondering that, first reason.
That's where we got it, I guess.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm just wondering.
On the bridge construction, the uh, they brought in another couple trains, a couple Essex. They should be demolished from the deck today, and they're working on a causeway at the B sixty-one down on two eightieth, they're shaping the west embankment for that, for the west pier, NERF working on the north field entrance. As part of that, they do have their temporary bridge crossing in place. Yesterday, I spent an hour on the phone with H D R up in amongst the raised ramp. And uh, continuing to work on that, it'll be turned in into February. Yesterday afternoon, I dropped the county budget off at the auditor's office. And next thing, worked on county five-year program. In fact, we're gonna discuss that in general terms. Next board meeting, is that an evening meeting?
Evening, evening, yeah.
And so we just talk about what's on, on the fiber program now, and then what kind of sequence we want on some uh, maybe steel build projects.
Maybe some money available, where we're gonna try to find it from. An idea there.
We're always looking, I'm always looking for money.
Well, I mean, where can you, we're gonna pull it from with the next five years.
Correct, correct. Questions for me?
I have one more, on that bridge, College Springs, day twenty bridge, I had that question last night, and I think I know the answer, but I'll ask it again. Uh, how many ton bridges are gonna be with?
It'll be legal, we.
Be forty ton?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, there'll be one lane down the middle.
Right, one lane to forty ton.
Right.
Okay, I had that question asked last night. Okay, that's all I have, Tom, okay?
That's a, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, J D. All right. Next thing we have on the agenda is the boiler options with Jeff Dean or Justin Compton. Online, I probably didn't say that right.
That's what it's just in.
Online, okay.
All right, um, I did bring some documentation in case you guys hadn't gotten the budgetary proposal I gave Gene. That's it out right now. So Gene gave me a call, um, a couple months back, said you guys had a inspection on your boilers for the fire department. Uh, it did not pass, so he gave me a call and said, hey, Justin, can you guys help us with bringing together a plan for these boilers? A couple of things that you see in this packet here is, the first page is the budgetary proposal that I gave the Gene, gave him a couple of different options. Uh, the next page would have been uh, some energy calculations uh, for if you were to go with high efficiency. And then the next two pages are the two different boiler options that I discussed with Gene. Uh, so basically what we talked about is, these boilers are from nineteen eighty, so about forty, something forty-three years old. Um, they've been running decent as of late, but they still didn't pass the inspection. Um, Gene and I talked about potentially a high efficiency boiler option. I did do the energy calc, and you can see there, it's not as good as we had hoped, but it is much more expensive to do as well. Um, the reason for that is that you have to use specialty exhaust when it comes to doing a high efficiency boiler. Uh, so we'd have to run new duck, uh, not duck, but uh, piping, P P C piping from the top of each of the two boilers and out to the side, which very limited on where we can and can't do that, so. Um, additionally, with the boilers, the control system that actually controls them, Gene has a, a room up in his office that he has basically a, an old Siemens control system. Um, it is also obsolete and outdated, it probably hasn't been updated since the nineties. Um, including the, there's a control panel in the basement that controls the air handler, steam exchange, steam heat exchanger, the chillers, and the boiler system, one panic panel for all that. And that panel probably was installed in the late eighties. Um, typically, control systems last fifteen to twenty years, boiler systems, um, really twenty-five, thirty, if you're really pushing, you guys, or is it around forty? On those boilers, I don't know if you guys have any questions on these different options or kinda how it works. The one thing that does have to happen if we're gonna do the boilers though, is that control system is gonna be, have to be replaced. Just because the boilers, new sensors that are gonna come on those new boilers aren't gonna be compatible with really, really old control panels. Um, these are budgetary numbers, because I didn't know, you know, when it would be approved, so we tried to guess to make the, I can't remember if it's the high efficiency ones, or if it's the standard efficiency ones, but one of the two is available now, but we wanted to try and jump on. Um, get it done this summer, so, did you guys have any questions for me?
What brand is the boiler we have down there?
The brand that you have right now, um, I have to look at my phone, but I always go with Lock and Barre, those are the ones that I like to use.
Yeah.
We can.
The one we have must have been pretty good.
It was impressive, yeah. I've seen worse, which is crazy. Uh, yes.
So all these, well, we probably need to look at this, you know, another time or two to make sure we, it's a big expense, well.
I think uh, the high efficiency, when you guys looked at those costs, didn't come in to be as
Didn't say much.
as we initially thought, correct?
Right, I was, I was thinking it'd be uh, at least four or five times more. Um, but it came in around three grand a year, which is not, not enough for the difference.
Take forever, yeah, if that works, so.
Maybe thirty a year, yeah.
I think initially, we were thinking we need to move to the computer system for sure, and if that fails tomorrow.
It wouldn't have anything.
We have nothing, and then I think the boiler option.
So that option number one, have the uh, computer system in, I'm trying to read it here.
Yeah, that's the insight too.
That's just, just redoing the, put two new boilers, and what does a computer controls possible?
So option, that insight to disego migration? Yeah, I tried to break it out, I tried to break it out for clarity, I mean, in reality, you can do the controls portion first, and then do the boilers.
I see.
But you really can't do the boilers and then the controls.
I see.
I broke it out.
Pre-COVID, we had actually started to work on moving, we actually, one year from budgeted for the new computer system, and I think it was a year right before COVID, and then probably kind of shut down everything, you guys had a lot of turnover, and it just didn't get completed that year, but that is something that uh, several years ago, we had an issue, I think everybody in here could remember where um, heat stopped working, uh, so we had to have Siemens come down and have an emergency call, I think twice in a week, if I remember right, and uh, we thought at that point, it was going down, so. It is definitely something we do not wanna wait on.
And when it comes to the control, the newer one would be web-based, uh, who, your IT department to get remote connection, so you don't actually have to have someone drive down. Um, you guys are kind of an interesting spot, I actually cover all of Nebraska and Iowa, I manage the entire team, um, and Omaha is about two hours, New Orleans is about two hours, so both my teams can actually get down here and help you guys, so, but still two hour drive. If we get that computer web-based, then we can do remote connection and save you the four hours of technician driving.
Did we, is there sales tax dollars being saved up for this? I don't remember on the budget, is there anything being saved yesterday?
We had some, they are, yeah, important, so.
I know we'll have some of that also.
What do we have left in our book? Do we know what's?
I was thinking it was around five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand?
But I don't see. Seven hundred. Wait, maybe look at that, well. Uh, what does, what does it mean, they said it failed, the fire department failed, what does that mean?
Uh, so your grandfather's in right now, so technically it's fine, but they're recommending that you should really update it for years.
Because it's just the age of it.
Age of it, it was put in during different codes.
I see. Okay, so all of our units and all the building will just be just the same, no problem, it's just, it's the new.
Yeah, everything else would be the same, um, Gene and I have talked about the fan coil units a little bit. Uh, it's just a little more time intensive, but relatively easy to pop on and off, relatively speaking.
Does that mean these, all these units?
Yeah, all these units, so you have a lot of those.
Have a bunch of them, yeah.
And he wanted to focus on the boilers right now, just because the boilers feed all the pieces, so. Yep, start with the boilers, get good hot water supplies throughout the building, and then start looking at fan coil units, either as they go or all at once.
And that was a really tough one, too, especially looking at, because I know we have a couple that maybe aren't working.
Yeah, him and I talked about it, I did give him, basically a per fan, we have a budget number, just in an email. Um, what other projects have we done recently, so I did give him that, I mean, it's gonna add up, she had a lot of fan coil units.
They're very expensive.
I do think that we're gonna move forward, we do need to add a little extra to this, just in case that they get in there, they find several that aren't uh, functioning as well as, because I do know on some of our, we've had issues with several, a couple of those, and
Well, let's.
Is it your office? Is it just me, I know there's a couple of them.
I'm working so good.
So we talked about potentially, I mean, eventually we probably need to replace them all, but starting now. We need to replace the ones that aren't working.
Well, yeah.
If we wanna do, if I can work with Gene, by doing an audit, audit on the fan coil units. Um, and then we can just figure out how many we would need to do that are failed or failing right now. Um, and then we can, we can add them to this project and get them taken care of, or additionally, we can do it as a separate project, uh, totally up to you guys.
I think, so the numbers we're talking about, nobody knows what we're looking at, the numbers we're talking about is the, the control panel is sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, plus or minus ten percent.
Just because if, you know, put in the budget in two years.
We don't know, so that's, that's, that's the number for the control panel, and the boiler that makes the most sense more like what we have, is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred dollars. Plus or minus ten percent, those are the, that's what we're talking about. Uh, well, it sounds like we're very good at looking at it, but I think we'll have to have to have, maybe if there's anybody else that does this, look at it too, have two, few people look at it, so we make a decision based on at least two, two bids.
Additionally, Siemens is part of the Sourcewell program, I don't know if you guys are Sourcewell or not, no. We have a cooperative purchasing program for nonprofits, governments, uh, school districts. And essentially what that is, is we have to give specific pricing for that, we have a maximum number we're allowed to go. Uh, and I did try to do that as part of this, a little part of the, yeah, so that you guys satisfy your bid requirement, satisfy uh, me making sure that I'm giving you a good price.
Okay, this is kind of a wholesale type crime.
And I would say too, that we work with Siemens on the boiler costs of the chiller, and so it's kind of a it would be, I don't know how you would get that to work if you separated them out.
Yeah, from a, from a control standpoint, it's a little bit easier for us, because it's our existing control system. Uh, and what we can do is basically transfer the database, and then just make sure your graphics are clean, your user interface. Uh, so that when Gene's working on it, he can just, you know, take care of it quickly and not have to figure out how it works. Uh, still kinda understand how it works, based on how it was before. Um, and yeah, we've, I think we did the chiller project years ago.
Two thousand twelve or thirteen.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that's our option, I guess.
Additionally, if you guys want me to get more bids for some of my subcontractor work, I can. Uh, because I do have.
Subcontractor work, what do you?
Uh, some insulation, we don't do insulation in-house, um, test and balance, so we make sure that the water flows balanced, um, electrical, so making sure.
Is this not included bad, this is just?
This is included in this price, but I have to get budget numbers from everybody, so I can, I can drill down further and try and uh, put this out on the street for, for my people. Um, and essentially, we would act as your general contractor and do this whole project for me.
Okay. Well, uh, if you wanna see if there's any other options, of course, you brought your bid in here, I'm sure you tried to make it look good, but if you see the other options do the same thing, any better, we're gonna we gotta think about this at least, it hasn't quit today, at least a week or two here, while we think about it. So I would say, if you could do that, thank you for putting this together, we have a couple of options, we'll see if we can find any.
Question, but if we reach out and have other, we still have all of the warranties and basically, you guys assess more than just you currently are, because that is one thing that we do appreciate when we have.
Yeah, so if we run the project, uh, for example, we ended up running it as the general contractor, um, your warranty goes through us, but also the manufacturer. Um, so you would have that warranty still, um, I can't speak to what other people are doing, but I assume that my, actually, you want.
You're gonna look and see if any, check and see if any of the subcontractors have a little more, a little more hungry, maybe.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, so I can reach out to a couple of different folks, get a little bit more, um. Again, I did budget this a little bit high, I didn't, I didn't have any intention of, you know, walking out here from the first door or anything, so I wanna give you guys some options that you can think through it, we wanna do it this year, do we wanna do it next year? If I can, if we're gonna do it this year, I'm sure that number's gonna come down a little, because I had to add a little fudge in case it was next year, or the year.
I think it's very possible, it'll be this year, very possible, so we just need to iron it down all we can, and we'll see if. So if you could do that.
Absolutely.
Shoot at the email or whatever, the pricing.
Yeah, absolutely, can we just hurt the gene?
No longer by this.
Oh, Gene is along with us, okay.
Yeah, presented, I guess, to Melissa and us, I guess.
Oh, do you guys?
You think it's actually, probably, you wanna?
That's me. Okay, that'd be fine. So do that, we'll iron this out and get something going. Appreciate you coming.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. So I don't know, do you, what do you think, Todd, do you think what I go for today? Oh, man.
I, I, I think we, I need to look at this, these numbers, I would like to look at it, and also just kinda do some background on it. Um, you know, I had talked to Melissa here a couple weeks ago about the boiler issues, and but uh, now that I've got some documentation and stuff, it'd be nice to go through it and look at it.
We're also gonna be in the budget here pretty soon, and decide where we get the money from.
Right. You know.
Whether from our part or wherever, so. Okay, that, that sounds good, I appreciate you coming here this morning. Next thing we have on the agenda is uh, all of our, resolution number eleven, which is all of our boards that we currently sit on, the three supervisors, the two of us right now. Now, we generate, do we read all that, I think we read it all last year. Okay. What we have, it's on the agenda, kind of the agenda, is the Clarendon Cluster Local D C A D government board, is the Clarendon Supervisor, I'll be filling in there until we have a new Clarendon Supervisor. Fourth Judicial District, uh, Department of Corrections Service is also declaring the supervisor, I am the alternate. Human Services Council is declaring the supervisor, Todd is the alternate for that one. Hungary Canyon's Alliance, uh, the board I sit on, Todd is the alternate. Juvenile Tension Center, the board I sit on, Todd is the alternate. Love Hill Development Conservation Authority, Board of Directors, I sit on that board. E nine one one Service Board, I sit on that board, Paige, I may make it on that one. Yeah, is it this?
I don't know.
Okay.
I guess so, go ahead.
In the past, the E nine one one Service Board, the Emergency Management Commission, there has been one supervisor that's done both. You guys get paid mileage trends to go to these, right? Okay. There's a couple of things with that, when we have an E nine one one Service Board or an E M A meeting, they're usually the same night, one night after the other. I would like to make a suggestion with all of the boards that you guys sit on, to try to pull two together and be more efficient on things, with Todd's background in uh, the fire department for numerous years, uh, I think we're probably pushing twenty almost. I would, uh, I'd like to make a suggestion that uh, maybe since the meetings are on the same night, and back to back, that would be a little more efficient, plus with Todd's background in the radios, on using them with the fire department, with how they manage them, and as far as meeting resources for the emergency management. I'd like to, just on that one, say that he might, in some of our opinions in the uh, emergency services, he might fit in real good there, plus you're being a little more conservative on how you're managing your time, I know Jacob looking down here, you've got plenty of boards that you sit on and everything, I, that's just a suggestion for me. Um, as current chair of the E nine one one Service Commission, I mean, Jacob, you worked great with us on those, but if we've got someone on the board with that expertise in those areas, I thought maybe it'd be a better idea to use that. Just a suggestion, that's up to you guys, and the meetings are back to back, instead of having both, you have to go to one, you'd be a little more efficient on where you go.
Yeah, I was chasing truck around a little bit of that. Yeah, I was chasing Chuck around a little bit of that clarifying in Page County. I've never turned in mileage, but I've never.
No, 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 that.
We can.
A little more efficient on what your management of time is on that.
Yeah.
That's just a suggestion.
No, it's not bad. And Todd knows all about that stuff. So I don't know if they're not being in the resolution. We have to table that, who'll do that, that section of it. What's the rule? Do we have to table if we decide to do that? Since it's not in the resolution, how do we? I don't know the rule. Can we change where? Do we change it right now? Okay, I'm fine. I, I don't have a problem with that.
No, I don't have a problem.
Are you good with it?
Yep.
Okay, then let's, let's, uh, what we'll do there is on G there, the E nine one one Service Board, make that Todd. And then, uh, H, Emergency Management Commission, make that also Todd. On those. So, uh. Yeah, okay, we got that. And so, so G will be Todd Mayer and H would be Todd Mayer, the Emergency Management Commission. Okay, so if we got that fixed. Well, you're gonna get busy, Todd. Page County, I can do something else you need me to. Page County Enterprise Zone Commission is Todd Mayer. Page County Landfill Association is myself and Todd is the alternate. Page County Loss Control Coordinator for liability insurance coverage is Todd. Uh, Page County. Uh, Coordinating Board is all three supervisors. R P A Regional Planning and Authority, Area Thirteen is Todd, I'm the alternate. Southwest Iowa Mental Health Regional Planning is, who's gonna be nervous, the supervisor is a man, and I'm the alternate for that. Southwest Iowa Planning Council, Swiftco is Todd, and I'm the alternate. Well, Bonsi Mental Health is Todd, and I'm the alternate. West Central Committee Action is Todd, and I'm the alternate. Workforce Investment Act is Todd, and, and the plan supervisor is the alternate. Zion Recovery Services is the, whoever the plan supervisor is, and Todd the alternate for that. There, we got them all ready. We just left all those the same, except for what we just lost, is what it's always been, like, for all the different districts. So on that resolution number eleven, we heard two changes there. If we're, if we're good with that.
Yeah, but if we need to make a change to the, to the board, so the, the only one I would, I would question is, I know Swiftco sent me a thing. Uh, on a meeting that I'm not able to attend. And I don't, I mean, that's, that's fine, but I think, um, I think their meetings are like once. Like they have one in January and then one not.
If you can't go, I can go for you.
Okay, so you can.
I'm the ultimate.
Okay.
Or we can switch it or whatever.
Alright, okay.
Or you can not, then need a, another supervisor in here.
I don't, since we just kinda left it alone, I don't think so. Unless they have a real big expertise like Todd does radio, then we can do that. We just kinda left it the way it was. Like we talked about, some of these boards, I'm starting to understand that I've been on for two years. You finally get a voice. You finally figure out what's going on after about two years, and you become effective. When you, you switch too much, you're. You're so new, you don't know what's going on.
In the past, we had all three supervisors involved in the boards.
On what boards?
These boards.
Yeah, this should be exactly the same as what the resolution has always been from when I started.
So, but, wait, I think what she's saying is, so when, if we appoint, uh, a new person to be on the boards, that would be in the Clarendon District. That person would end up going to these boards. That's already, that's already listed as.
All on here, we're, we're in the supervisor. We'll see, be determined, you see that?
Is that?
Unless they have a strong suit that benefits county, I think we'll leave it alone. Uh, cause I've not sat on any of those boards that Chuck was on, so. Whoever will be new, so. The boards I sit on, I finally got a working knowledge of what's going on. I can be kind of effective. Every year it gets better.
There, um, there is one that's not on here that I don't know if we need to add, um, Veterans Affairs. Uh, Veterans Affairs Board.
I don't know, and that's, I think we can attend, but I don't know, can we go and vote on that board? Or just you can, you're just attending.
Okay, alright, cause I was asked to attend, they sent me an agenda and.
It's just to get what's going on.
Okay, alright. Yep, what they meant.
Nope. Okay, we got this here. Well, this is the way it, it was, was when I came and we just kind of changed the, the names out by the districts, left it all alone, so. If we need to readjust, we could, uh, in time.
Okay, so we make a motion that the boards, um.
Resolution.
Resolution eleven stays as written.
With two, two.
With two, two, six, yeah. With G and H being changed.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, I know there's too much going on. Uh, okay. Let's see here. Next thing we have on the agenda is, uh. Discuss Action Board Expiring Term Applicants. That's what you pass out. Pass out the board applications. Do I have those here? For all the boards, we have those applications here for all our board, the public health and all those things.
But you know, them to in December.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't know they were printed. I've looked at all of them, why don't we have?
I've looked at all of them. I didn't print them out, but I've.
Yeah, I haven't seen them all. Okay. Well, we've got a. So I guess we're going to the next section eight B, Discuss Action Other Appointments, our resolution number twelve. We have two to the Board of Health. And one conservation. Did, I did, I did print some of that, didn't I? Let's see. Let's see. Well, goodbye. I don't have my computer to print, I have to go by memory. We, we have, I think we had three. The Board of Health, three applications. And I. Why don't we do this? Why don't you print those, why don't you, please, would you please print those? So we can look at it. We don't have them printed. I can't print on this computer.
I don't have all of them, right?
Well, you don't have.
Here's, uh, so.
Can you print them all, Todd?
I don't think I can print to.
Or just read the name. We have Karen Mason, Rosie Kevin, and Wendy Meyer. Okay.
Yeah, so the Board of Health, um, we have tissue razor going off and word gives me going off.
You have two listed, you have two openings on the Board of Health. One listed on conservation.
Yeah, yeah, one, yeah.
So how it's listed is how many openings you have.
Yes, I see. I was just thinking how many people we have to choose from. Okay, well.
Do you, you should have had them in the packet last week. Did you guys keep that up there?
Ooh.
All the one that goes with the plane, huh? Oh, that's probably right in there. I have them.
I don't see them in there. Um, well, I have all the listings of the, the board members that are going off.
Mm-hmm.
I have all that.
Well, I would.
And I do have the.
We can just write in there. We have down here leaving the agenda to expand the Board of Health, so I think if we have three and. One of us wanna do it, Todd wants to do it, or whatever, we can put a fourth one on there, so let's just.
Looking for all of the applications. So I do have. Board of Health application. So.
Yeah, we have Karen, Rosie, Wendy, is what I've got. I remember reading there. I do, yeah, so I guess go ahead and make a motion for two of them, I guess. We'll make a motion for two of those. They're all good, and I think we're gonna be able to use them all anyway, so. I guess I can make a motion. Uh, we'll do Wendy Meyer and Karen Mason, the Board of Health, do that in person.
A second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I've got those two done. Conservation Board, uh, Karen Mason and Wendy Meyer.
Karen Mason?
Yes. Okay, and then we have Conservation Board, there are two applicants there.
Uh, I believe we had three.
Or three.
Yeah, I think there were three. There was.
Was those, Jane.
Kathy Jordan, Jane Simpson.
It was her.
And, uh. Is it Karen Long?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Yep, and there's only one opening.
Only one open, so. All three good. Kathy's been on there. She's done a good job. She sent us an email.
Yeah, that was.
Uh, and we've read all the applications, so.
Really?
Uh.
I'm not hearing anything bad about Kathy.
Right.
Think she's done decent job. I was, I was impressed with the email. That was, that was nice of her to reach out.
We've got, everything's starting over a lot in the county area. A lot of new, new things happening. And it's not bad to have a fresh, let people take a break and have a fresh start. It's not bad to keep people around either, so. Uh, Jane, I'm impressed with Jill. Jane's ability, her greenhouse and all her, how she's so good at making things. Look nice and so involved in doing research, so. I think it'd be nice to have a chance at this, to just bring another point of view to the board. So, not that Kathy's not done a good job, but I think it'd be nice to have that point of view there, to just have a new, maybe a little different one. So I'd make a motion to, for Jane Simpson to the Conservation Board.
A second.
Okay, uh, in discussion, I guess I keep forgetting that, in discussion. Well, we're good. Okay, all those in favor? Aye, aye, I got that done. Now, you have the list of boards. Uh, I don't have that list. I guess printed the ones for, for Swiftco and for Sura. Uh, A J Lyman on one, or the Western Iowa is, is that A J or is that, uh?
Yeah.
Here, it is right here, I've got it right here.
Yeah.
Give me pieces of paper. There we go. Yeah, Southwest, Swiftco with A J Lyman last year, and I'm fine with that, that's, that's. So we wanna go ahead and then also, the. That Sura was Teresa Batcock. She has been for a long time. And also. West to Ireland Tourist was Lane Farwell, and I'm fine with all three of those. I'm not aware of anybody else asking to do that. So do you wanna go ahead and the zoning, let's do those three, I guess, just to leave them as they are, those three people with.
Okay.
Swiftco being A J Lyman.
Do we have to do those individually, or do we do it all as well?
Okay, let's do, let's do Swiftco, A J Lyman. I'll just make this motion, so I'm looking at it.
Yep.
A J Lyman, West Nile with tourism, Lane Farwell. And.
Teresa, Teresa.
Yeah, Sura, uh, Southern Iowa Regional Housing Authority, Teresa Batcock.
Yes.
Those are three there. I make that motion.
A second.
Discussion? Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, I bet that. Now we're down to the zoning Board of Adjustment. We had two applications for that. And Ross Farwell, Kalen Folk. So. Read their applications, both qualified, so if we have any. Discussion or nominations you'll make?
Yeah, no, I, uh. That, they both had good applications. So, um, I would make a motion of Kalen.
Okay, I'll second that. Kalen Folk. I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we got that done, boy. Okay, now we skip over nine twenty-five. I'm probably, I'm at nine fifteen, five. I guess all the rest of us, uh. Uh, that's for Board of Adjustment, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Kalen Folk. Uh, Ross Farwell. So that covers all of that. The rest of the things on our agenda are, uh. I don't think anybody's coming in for these. I don't know if the time really matters, so we'll just keep moving. The, uh, uh, next point I have is Discuss Action Appointing, Reappoint Township Clerks. I have that great big list here. And. I've had nobody reach out to me and all these different townships, and so I, I think the thing to do is leave it as it is. I've had nobody ask, do we do anything different?
We usually call them.
Yeah, uh, well. Yeah, all this has been, the Shepherd's hiding last week, everything's kinda went up in here. So we can, we could. Table that another week, and I don't think it's a hurry on that. I have not reached out to all these people.
Okay, yeah, I usually, the chair reaches out to them.
Okay, we'll do this. And we'll just table, uh, till next week, if we have a chance to call these people that are not the elected ones. We'll make, I make a motion to table the clerk appointment till next week.
I'd take, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have another item here, uh, number twelve. Discuss, uh, action to expand Page County Public Health to seven members, including one supervisor. Okay, what I did there was. Yeah, all that, item eleven. Okay, on that, I noticed in the minutes, the last few meetings, they've had trouble with form, a lot of trouble. Not be able to have a meeting, so I reached out to Isaac, the attorney up there, said, what can we do with this? Can we give them some more members to make it, where they maybe reach for them? And they said, that's fine. It takes a simple, simple motion in a meeting to expand. So I thought that maybe helped, and we have enough people that applied, so, uh. I guess we need to make that motion to expand from five to seven.
I make that motion that we expand. We add two more members, Page County Public Health.
I'll second that. And, uh. That's one. No, we, we, for it, I didn't even know we needed to, for the long pick on the board. Yeah.
Would it be a possibility for?
You wanna come up and, sorry, just.
Would it be a possibility for the current sitting board to review the applicants and then submitting back, submitting back to you? When we feel be best appropriate for the board?
Well, our position is appoint the board.
Right.
Not the board to appoint the board. So the, or public board of health, appoint your own board to not.
And I, and I do understand that. I was just thinking of the fact that, you know, we wanna make sure that we get the right, right kind of person that is gonna. Be dedicated to pushing the health of Page County forward, you know, versus any type of agendas or anything like that that could possibly need. Sitting, being quite a question.
Well, we read the applications, and all three of them were sent in are highly medically qualified, but trying to train, so I don't know. The people that were leaving, one, I think, worked at a daycare, and I'm not sure what the other one worked, so I mean, there's. I believe they're highly qualified, and we've been elected to place the seat on this board, so. And then, I don't, I don't, I've, there've been some situations in the past where boards are choosing their own boards. Or even, 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 uh, department heads choosing their own boards, and that. And the whole, the whole scheme of things, let's check some balances you have.
Right, once I do understand that.
Yeah.
And then the other question would be, if the, whoever's supervisor sits on the board. If they can act more like a liaison versus a voting member, because there's a lot of conflict of interest, could you have a center conflict of interest statement? For the Board of Health, and there's a lot of times that that person won't be able to vote. On any type of approval or agenda items, because there's a conflict of interest that can represent, be represented, so.
Well, I would say we can, uh, uh, the, the legal, I called Isaac and that. Part, part of the attorney, because there's no problem to have a supervisor sit on there.
And there's not, there's not.
Uh, and, and so, and if it is, end up being a problem, we can put out, you know, we can appoint at our. Discretion to somebody else, take the spot of the supervisor. Todd has background and, and, uh. And all, like I said, like Lyle, at all his emergency response stuff, and he understands that. There's been those kind of people on the board before, so. And all, like I said, like Lyle, at all his emergency response stuff, and he understands that. There's been those kind of people on the board before, so. That kinda makes sense too to me. I don't have. I've done a lot of surveys on animals, but not on feedings, so.
Well, then that's, I think, that's the. That's my concern, is just the transparency, is kind of, just saying, hey, what do you, you know, previously just, I guess. Just talking with me, saying that, hey, what do you think of this idea? I know, because there has been an issue with, with the form.
Yeah.
But those two individuals are no longer on the board, and they served, and they served, they did, they did their service to that, but the other three have been consistently showing up, so. You know, like you said, this, it's time to get two new people on, which we just did, which is fine, you know, and then seeing how that works out. I don't know necessarily if it's necessary to increase to seven at this time, because the two people we had, it's an issue that are no longer on. So that's just a couple of considerations.
That's a consideration, uh. I will say this, to say, I re, I appreciate your emails, your updates, what you're doing, because that, other than that, it's very good. And, uh, we're able to see what's going on and read it. I do read them. That is a, a good thing you're doing, that we didn't, never have, that I've never experienced, so. That's the really.
I just really.
You kinda keep up the speed there, with what's going on.
I just really encourage you guys to look at making sure that whoever gets put on that board is gonna have. Kind of a humanitarian approach to public, public health knowledge and moving our county health rankings forward, you know, and just not.
Yeah, well, these three, these three people, I mean, my goodness.
I think everybody that we've looked at.
Say they weren't.
Everybody that we've looked at on the applications.
Are highly qualified.
Yeah, and I have no doubt that they are going to put the health, you know, the health, well-being of Page County citizens first.
Yeah.
When, if they're on the board, making decisions and, and vote.
They also.
Um, and they at least have a medical background.
Oh, yeah.
We haven't had it in the past. Now, we've had three people, we have two people that have, well, all who are board members now have medical backgrounds. One's a CEO, and the other two are, is a midwife, you know, a little doctor, so.
What's so special about these three that I'm so glad they applied is they also own their own business, so they do a budget. And have medical background, not just working in metal, so that's like three more people that put together their own budget every year. I'm tickled to have them try, so. No, it'd be, and it's, we need to make sure we give them all a chance, and so, if we need, if it ends up being a conflict with a supervisor somehow, it makes it hard for him. But we can, we can adjust that, appoint somebody else that's better or something too, so. I say for now, I'm, we're tickled to have the three we have. They all three run a budget, and, uh. I think it's a good idea, and I think it'll be help, but it might. I don't think it's anything to worry about. I think it's something to be, uh, it's gonna be a game, it's gonna be a game.
It's just that transparency I was kinda looking for, instead of just kinda catching it.
Yeah.
Off the back saying, we're gonna increase it to seven, so.
Yeah, well, as we. Reached out, this is our, you know, everybody has a job to do, and our job is to appoint these boards, so, uh. I didn't think that that was, if that's what we do, and then, then, then they work with you guys, and then. Let's check some balances again, so.
Right.
Anyway, so that, thank you, Richard. Okay.
Yes, go ahead. Yep, sure.
My name is Stella Calhoun. Why are we putting a supervisor on the board of health now? Can you answer that for me?
Well, my thought of that is, one, Todd has experience in this council, and, and two. The budget, 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 uh, it's good to have maybe some thinking about budgets in the situation, which we will have to deal with. And I sit on the Landville Board and all these things, so that's.
Are you on, are you a board of supervisors on every board that there is in the county?
Not every board. There has been in the past, I think, in Conservation Board they have. It's just kinda, you do it or you don't. A lot of counties do, some counties don't. It's kind of a. Whatever the board chooses to do. We've, we've been elected to figure out what we think we need to do, and. Mainly, if we'd had a fourth really good one, maybe Todd would've been more experienced. Todd would've said.
Sorry, what?
If we'd had somebody else, uh, maybe that would've been better than us for something. They would've brought one of us. We could've just did them as it was, but we have. We have four applications, which would make sense, so.
Well, I, I know, I, I'm not asking about the board of health people. I just wanna know why the, all of a sudden. The board of supervisors feel they need to be on the board of health.
Well.
Because, I mean, for umpteen years, that hasn't been, so, you know, I'm one of them old people.
Yeah, I think coming through what we've been through in the last couple of years. I think it's, it's probably a good thing to be able to work closer with the board of health. Um, through, you know, we, there was a lot of things coming through the pandemic that. You know, probably, um. Could use a little bit more cooperation between the two, the board of supervisors and the board of health, and so I think having that bridge. I think will help in the long run. I think it'll build that relationship, um, a lot more. My understanding is, you know, they, the board of health gets a. A fund, and then they decide what they're gonna spend that on.
Right.
And, um, I think it's, it's, it would just be nice to, you know. Have insight to some of that, and then also just build a, build a relationship between the board and the supervisors, so there's. Really, uh, you know, Richard talked about transparency. I think that helps a lot.
I sure haven't heard anything.
No.
So, is the board of supervisors gonna be a voting?
Yes.
Person?
Yeah, I, I would think so. Um, you know, Richard brought up the point of, you know, where there might be a conflict of interest on some things. I think that's something that the supervisor, whoever's on the board, that's me, um, you just need to evaluate. Make sure that we're not voting in a conflict of interest situation, um, where we can, we can bounce that feedback off.
Budget would probably be one of those.
Possibly.
Be, because we bring it to you guys, so.
Right.
I mean, yeah, I'm just speaking for public health. I've been in it for. All my life practically, and I just don't quite understand all of that yet, and I do fear. That there's gonna be some pushing and some, you know, I hope that it is a, um, a happy. Greeting.
They're, they're, I'm pretty certain, and it's been a while since I talked to Lyman, and I'm pretty certain the board of supervisors used to sit on the public health. I've.
Now, I was in public health since the eighties. And there's never been a supervisor on the board of health that I know of. I know that's old.
Yeah. Well, if it ends up where there's a conflict, we'll probably find some other people trying, we'll appoint somebody else to replace them, but. You know, there is, last year there was things done, I mean, when, that was in the budget. We'll talk about that in budget time, but. Raises happen, and salaries happen, that was outside of what we talked about in budget time, so. It would give us cause of the board to, to watch the budget a little harder, because whenever we approve a budget, and then the budget is not followed. It does, it does give reason for the people approving the budgets, you know, the salaries, you know, I think Richard was hired, it was. I'm not sure where the money came from, exactly, because it was not in the budget that way, so it had to come from somewhere else in the budget.
Yeah, you wouldn't have had me much longer.
Let's say.
I said, you wouldn't have had me working very much longer, because it was a long time, and I don't know all of that.
I understand we have.
It's the board of health.
They made a decision. We have to understand, the budget's a budget, we have to come in and explain those things. And if there's areas, if there's enough money to find the money, then you wonder where that money is, you know, how did they find the money to do it?
Richard's done a wonderful job.
I, I just compliment him. I think he's doing a great.
Try to get things rolling and get more money into it, I will tell you that, so.
I have no complaints there, it's just in a budget, we have to work on the budget, so we have to understand if there's money to fill. If an amendment would've been different than finding money somewhere else.
I just had to put my true sense worth in, because I really do fear there's gonna be quite a bit of conflict.
I would hope not.
Hope not.
I would hope.
Thank you.
Todd's really nice. So, okay, uh. Well, on that, one, we have, we have to expand, I mean, I guess we're, we're kinda doing open format here. We're letting public comment, that's fine. And we're gonna talk about that here in a minute, so, uh. If else anyone say?
Do we need a motion then on?
Yeah, on twelve A.
Twelve A and twelve B, or just?
Yeah, we could. Okay, to go ahead and do it. Okay, we did our discussion.
Okay.
Made a vote. All those in favor of expanding public board of health to seven members?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, now, twelve B, the two members we're gonna appoint. Uh, the two we have, I mean, we have Rosie leftover, Rosie Cavan, she submitted her application, she'd be excellent.
Yeah.
And, and Todd, you have some experience in all this emergency and, and response and all that stuff, like Lyle said. I think you're way more fitting than I am, and you have a lot of boards also, as I think about this, I can go home and count this, we're gonna. We, Rosie Cavan. We might need that, you've got, I think the way that worked, I don't know how that is, Shannon Dua, our other board, you have a lot, so we, we might look at that next week.
New guy.
And adjust it. Yeah, so we might adjust the, all those regional boards, we need to lighten their load with it somehow.
Yeah.
So, a lot of them don't meet very often once a year, but it's fine, we need to look at that next week, but that sure seemed like I read your name an awful lot. And we just did it the way it's always been, but maybe we need to look at that, so we will maybe look at that again next week and adjust a little. But on this, especially since you're doing another one here, so we need to make sure you're not overloaded. Uh, but on that, so, so I would say we have Rosie, and if you're interested, Todd.
Yep.
Uh. If you're okay with that, then I think that needs to be the motion. I guess I can make that motion. I make a motion for Rosie Cavan. Todd may hear to be the additional two members to board of health.
A second.
All those in favor? No vote on the budget? What's she saying? I don't know, I, that's the first I've heard of that, so I don't know. I'll have to reach out and ask legal counsel or something on that. Uh, and if so, we'll find somebody else, so I'm sure somebody will have interest. But for now, let's do that.
And so we can say that that's for, uh, preliminary until we get some more information.
Now, let's just do it. I think we, the most, let's do it, and then we'll, we'll check on it if it's a problem, or. I'm sure there's other people that would be interested, will seek, and will place somebody else on there. Yeah, go ahead.
You know, and that's, don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't wanna discourage a board of supervisor to be on our board. You know, using the reference of, like, every time with Donna Robinson, she sits on the board of health as well, but she's just strictly kind of a liaison. That's kind of what she heard, she accepted that role as, to that we can build that bridge and that relationship with board of supervisors. But then she also chose to do the liaison position because of the fact that. Each, um, she, there's gonna be no sense of conflict of interest, because it is a conflict of interest. Just to do a budget with the board of supervisor, that, then have that budget, board of supervisor turn around and approve that budget. So there is that conflict of interest that.
Well, he can't approve it by himself, but he's one of three votes, but, yeah.
Right.
He can't just.
So either, either at the board of health or at the board of supervisor, we need to abstain from that. So, they'd have to choose that, and that's how they would prevent that from being a conflict of interest. So we would encourage the board of supervisors beyond that, but really, just really consider having a part, being part of that discussion that happens in a board of health. But maybe just avoid any voting, and just abstaining from those type of things, because, I mean, at the end of the day, the thing that we, we tend to vote on. You know, other than, other than if there's another pandemic and things like that, because, you know, there, there's always room to improve on those type of things. And, you know, having that part of that discussion is important, you know, but I'm just really cognizant about not meeting anybody in a conflict of interest.
Right.
There's nepotism or there's anything like that that could occur to them, so.
Have you, has your budget turned in?
Yes, it has. It was.
And so, Todd's had no part in that budget. What are you putting together your budget, right?
Right, this year, yes.
So, this wouldn't even matter till next year.
Right.
So we're good right now, but I understand what you're saying. That's another angle, so I appreciate that. Okay, so that's good. Todd, you have no part of the budget anyway, so, so you can vote on it here, I would say. As we go on, because you had no part in building it, or voting on it, so. Any more discussion on that?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, I bet that. So. Let's see, not the other word, hell, all right, this is the topic here, trying to reset up shop here. Got a pretty new board and a new year, and everything changing, so I wanna kinda relook at everything in our supervisor meeting, uh, number thirteen on there. Days and times for meeting, that's the first thing to talk about, Todd.
Yep, so.
What do you think?
Um, so I ran my campaign, um, basically on, uh, getting. Our meetings, um, put back in the evenings where more of the public could attend. Um, I had heard from a lot of constituents when I was running, the, the meetings during the daytime. Uh, were very difficult to attend, um, they have to work, or they have to take work off to come to them. And, uh, so what I would propose would be to have, um, three, like. Uh, the first meeting of the month be the day meeting, so we would still have one day meeting per month, uh, the first Tuesday. And then the rest of the meetings each month would be in the evenings, um, at six o'clock. Um, that way, we're not, everything's gonna be at night, but, um, we'll leave one meeting during the day. Uh, for those that maybe work nights or something that need to be able to come. But, um, I definitely ran, you know, promising that, you know, the public would be more. Uh, able to attend and be more part of this board, and so, I, uh, definitely wanna live up to those expectations and. So, you know, uh, do what I said I was gonna do. I'm just bringing that up, so.
The first Tuesday, as I agree with you, and I ran the same thing, uh, and I was the public not that long ago, I was trying to come to these meetings, so, uh. So, the first Tuesday, do in the mornings, if the people work nights or whatever, we, we have somebody that can only come during the day, so we have a meeting still available for that. And we just know it's the first meeting of the month or the first Tuesday. What time you think? That, this is gonna come up again, but. I was thinking about the time, if we bumped it to like nine thirty, it would help on the agenda, which we're gonna talk about, getting things turned in, it would help.
Yeah, I would be fine with either nine or nine thirty.
Yeah, about, about a little bit later.
For the day shift meeting.
Yeah. Let's, let's maybe think nine thirty to try, that would give us some time, though. Because Monday morning, that Monday can be a panic, if there had to be something out of the agenda, it'd be hard for everybody to get it done.
I will just caution you and remind you that anybody who is not exempt, then if you're gonna go to more night meetings, would potentially be eligible for overtime then.
Who, by who, who do you mean? Who's not exempt, like county workers or something, or? So if they come into a meeting to do what? To do what?
Maybe they need to pretend to work, then meet with you guys, and it's a night meeting.
All elected officials would be salary, right?
Yes, but any of your. Non-exempt would not qualify.
Does that happen a lot, where we'd have non-exempt people coming?
Or basically, um, Cory.
Uh, J E salary, right?
Correct, sorry.
Engineer wouldn't matter.
But.
It's Cory's salary. When you come in, I know in your office, you flex time a lot.
Right, but with three night meetings, I'd be able to, for, for the jobs that we have to, with payroll and things and everything, we have to do in elections, so. I mean, that's a consideration that we're gonna have to look at too, because budgeting wise. Uh, I'm not gonna be able to flex three nights a month, especially.
Well, you're elected, aren't you? You're elected.
I am.
So like us, we. So, I know, we do too. Well, they, I understand it might be a little bit of a nuisance for us, and maybe even cost a little bit of money, but it's all about taxpayer. And so, and every other board, school board, you name it, all meets at night, and. We both ran on this, and we've got, we, and we believe it, so we'll have to just go into it and see how it works, and see what it costs, but.
I just wanted to compare you.
Yeah.
Actually, that could be some budget.
Yeah, well, that. That'd be something to look at, what's, that might cost, but. I think, uh. Well, I remember being in the public, and I remember trying to come to a meeting, and I remember trying to ask for a meeting to be the mincemeat people that wanted to come, and it was very. Frustrating, because a lot of people wanted to be heard, couldn't be heard, because they could not get off work at eight thirty in the morning. So I think having an N option, a first Tuesday of the month be in the morning, so we can, kinda like we do now, we book people who can only come in the evening, the first Tuesday, or at night. Well, then, the people that only can come in the morning, we can book the first Tuesday in the morning, if there's some businesses and that, but. But that's how they need to do it, if they're traveling or whatever. So that's, that's kinda some thought, we're thinking nine thirty on that first Tuesday, and then six and all the rest. Uh, let's see here, so that kinda sets days and time. If we wanna do that, the deadline for the agenda, so that will change kind of our deadlines, so if we do what we're saying, if we go ahead and. Prove that.
Can we make that?
Let's go ahead and do that, and then, what, everybody, do you wanna do that first?
That isn't a decision the board of supervisors makes on that, a deadline part of the office, that would be something my office would make. And then we would try to work through, so if you want some, we probably need to discuss that together.
Okay, well, I, just, yeah, we're gonna have to discuss that, because it needs to be. It's been, right now, it's such a, such a burden to have a noon on Friday, and then you've got Tuesday morning, and you've got the weekend. It seems like a whole nother week goes by where things happen, you know, lots of things happen, things change, you need to change the agenda, and that can be a.
Problem with that, though, is, is that we usually have different individuals at different times requesting. So then we usually have that Friday afternoon to get everything scheduled and get times in there appropriately. And then, of course, Saturday and Sunday, our office is not working, so then by this time, we've been in Monday morning.
There's no time. We're gonna be in really good shape on the, the rest of the Tuesdays, because there, we'll have all day Monday, all day, from. Till four or five, whatever time, with this evening meeting.
On the evening, yes, but with having that be not one set, I mean, I feel like you're gonna have to use people if we have it.
Two different times, yeah, that would be.
You know, we can, people are gonna go, okay, it's a, you know, there's a lot of people, and too many email in, uh.
And maybe.
They're not gonna have that.
Could you have the, uh.
Let's move our morning meeting a little later.
To be like Monday at noon?
It won't work for the morning meeting, so. Has to be twenty-four hours. So if we did ten o'clock, we could be.
We have both in a different yesterday, maybe mommy yesterday morning.
Yep.
I mean, I got to work and Jean resigned and everything happened, but it was on my computer. We have.
Right.
We also didn't monitor emails nine four seven, so we have jobs we need to do and other things that need to be done.
I would think that with our, I guess, the one, the one thing Jacob would be to have. You know, maybe keep the deadlines the the way they are, but then in the rest of our agenda, what we're talking about. Being able to have that that board communication at the end of our board meeting um to discuss other things that have maybe come up.
Yeah, well, we can't take actions, the problem.
Right, we may not be able to take action, but we could get them scheduled for the next.
Just call another meeting, uh, we can do that, but Friday at noon before Tuesday night meeting is like. Crazy for our part. And all these other boards I sit on do not operate that way, and they all have a lot of their jobs they do. And you get on the agenda twenty-four hours before, so I don't, uh, I think we need to work that out or if we need to find a way or somebody that can. Handle that at more time or something. Uh, we don't want to be too far from the meeting to be able to put on the agenda, especially as far especially.
I think the main thing is is just to make sure we don't violate that twenty-four hour rule. That's why we have it in place. It's more of a protection because. You can always have somebody email or call in Friday and ask to be on the agenda and it. My understanding with Isaac and I'm talking to legal counsel there. As as long as you're not violating that twenty-four hours rule, you're fine. It's perfectly acceptable to say, hey, you called in at two o'clock on a Friday. We're not gonna be able to get you on this agenda, but we can get you on. Next Tuesdays, you're not denying them the right to be on the agenda.
No, definitely. Well, it's even us as a board to be told by the auditor's office, we can't get on the agenda. That's, we can't have that. We have, we have business that has to happen.
If.
We can't have that. If, no, obviously, we just got to make sure. So if we're talking about.
And if there's emergencies or we're always willing to try to work, it's just.
We made that day shift.
Set up a whole agenda and then there's fourteen changes that come in over the weekend. We're not gonna have the time or. The ability to get that all accomplished in twenty minutes on a Monday morning.
Right, that's why we're trying to bounce that back.
We made that decision or made the day shift meeting a ten AM meeting and then had the cutoff at ten.
Nine, make it nine. There'll be an hour ahead on one Tuesday month. It'll only be one. It's almost never happens. Almost never does this happen. So if we made it, we made a ten o'clock meeting, the nine o'clock deadline on Monday morning, all the rest.
I I still. Probably going to be, I mean, for my office and sometimes payroll claims, I mean, payroll comes in at ten AM on a Monday. Um, there's times claims are coming in Friday, uh.
When did this twelve o'clock Friday come about? It was while I was here, I think. It's not been around very long.
It's always kind of been a general rule. We have just, um, we try to do. Basically, kind of ask people to comply with that more. Now, of course, if there's. Something that comes in, that's an emergency or something, we always try to work with anybody. It's just if you don't get it in before then. It's if we miss something, then it's kind of our way of protecting our office that then we're not, um. Cause we get busy, I mean, and there's times we're doing other, I mean, there's some times. Yesterday, I checked my email at, I think, nine thirty or ten o'clock, and I didn't get back until till three thirty, cause I was busy. With meetings and working with other individuals that if somebody messages me, it's just a way to make sure that we get those things on there and. And to people know that they're gonna be on the agenda then that week.
Are you, are you the only one that does the agenda or does Kristi?
No, my whole staff.
Your whole staff works on it?
Yeah, at different times.
Okay. I didn't know if you could like designate one person in the morning, like Monday morning, Christie, this is what you're doing.
Uh, a lot of other things going on in the office, so it would be, we don't just have one person that's handling the agenda all the time.
Okay.
So.
And if it gets to be too big a problem, I wouldn't mind taking on the agenda. That's no big deal.
I mean, and that's something too we can discuss. It's in that you know, Friday, and if there's something, maybe that's. A situation where you guys want to look at it and then update it and send it. I mean, there's nothing with that that's, you know.
I just don't want to impede business and add another week if we need to act. Most of the time we don't, but if there's something that needs to be done, I don't want to have some deadline on Friday stop it.
Right, and from our offices team, we just don't want to miss something and then have somebody that says that they're not on there or, um. You know, no, no different than if you're out doing something on a Friday afternoon, you know, jumping in until ten o'clock at night, you know. It's just that's our way of trying to protect that and make sure we communicate and get the information out to the individuals. On a timely basis as well.
The the night meeting is gonna help a lot with Monday for anybody. If I have to do it, put together that agenda will be twenty-four hours safely on those, all those meetings, so.
Yeah, if you wanna take that on your recording, I'll come to Jacob.
Let's see here. So then, let's see. So I don't know if that's if it's your decision when the deadline is. I didn't know that. I guess we have to talk about that a little bit more. So I guess we'll leave that one behind. Work on that, continue to work on that, maybe talk about that for next week, just so everybody knows.
Table that and just leave.
We gotta make a public announcement what that's gonna be, so we'll table that. Okay, we'll table that, work, see what works best. Agenda format, let's see there. I've kind of made some ideas with that, if we're turning over like.
Yeah, and with that, if you guys have a different way, you want that sent, you just send it to us and we can.
That way. Okay.
Yeah, we can send it out exactly this, that that's usually what we try to do. So if that's, if you want something sent different, just send it in to that agenda that way, and then we'll just push it out that way as well.
Well, as we feel other people saying, and I I like the word action instead of approve. I know approve doesn't mean approve necessarily, but. The action word, that's one idea. Just just change it to action on all these things we're gonna vote on, so maybe yes, maybe no, maybe take. The times, a lot, all the boards I sit on don't have times. They have a starting time, they don't have a, it it's strange. It's nice on one hand, but then it's.
Right, and you used to not do times, and then years ago, we went back to times just because we had different individuals that. Um, if they would come in and schedule a time, then it would be, especially if you have individuals from outside or different. Members from different boards come in, a lot of times they like to know what time they're coming in.
Yeah.
So that's kind of why we moved to that years ago.
Yeah, I've seen both sides and I've seen that here, and I've sat on all these boards and the nots in. We could go for like your first, if you're driving a long way, so you know you'll be pretty close to the beginning. But I would like to see, just we're discussing together here, see what you think, Todd.
Yeah.
We just kind of do our starting time and try try out time, cause a lot of times once we're like that, everybody don't talk.
Right.
And no one's here.
And I feel like if you're trying to get on the agenda.
You're gonna come to the meeting.
You need to be at the meeting.
Yeah.
And you know what time the meeting starts, be at the meeting, um, because we do have things that drop out. So you might get bumped up even sooner than what you.
Right.
Get out of here, but um, I just think that's a common courtesy if you're signed up to be on the agenda and.
We'll show up to the meeting.
Show up to the meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna, if you think that, I agree with that and we'll remove time.
When I send those in and.
Yeah, I have some notes here. I just wanted to make sure he agreed. He left the same thing, so I'll just give you some notes on that. Okay. Uh, let's see. I kind of like on this, this, if 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 you're building an agenda or if if I'm working on it, whoever's working on. Cause I'm chairing now and try to help me, cause I'm right on the best chair, breaking it down kind of in the. Numbering letters, just so I can really follow. Most agendas we have aren't very long. This is kind of a long one. Just to make it in that kind of format. I like that format.
Yeah, I would say if you just want to put it together where you want it and send it to us on Friday, then we'll push it out that way.
Put it out that way, okay, just to kind of chase it, to help go down and figure out where I'm at. Okay, let's see here, move. All the Zoom information, this is just the, this maybe, all that stuff needs to be, maybe move it to the bottom. It seems like I'm always looking at all the Zoom stuff. It'd be nice for the bottom. It's just notes. I don't know, Todd cares what you think about that. Uh, just kind of adjusting it, just how it looks, which isn't really that big a deal. It's just so simple to look right at it and see where we are. That's all I really had. I have some notes here on that, so.
So do you just wanna redesign the agenda and then just put it down all how you want and send it to us and just push it out on Friday?
Yeah.
Do we have to prove or make a motion to change it, or can we just change it without do anything we want, pretty much?
Why? I mean, like, you can't be crazy.
No, well, no, I'm not crazy.
I mean, you still have to comply with the code of Iowa.
Right, no, yeah, I understand that, but you don't have to vote on it or?
No, there's not.
We're just talking about setting up.
Okay.
Discussion here, just so we can have a public discussion about what we're doing here. Uh, okay, well then, for days and times, we have that, that's something we probably.
So we will just wait for you to send it to us, just so I'm clear. We're just gonna wait for you to send it to us on Friday and then we'll push it out.
Well, I guess I have to know everything that comes in, though, cause everything comes to you. A lot of stuff comes to you, doesn't come to me.
No, it all comes to all of us. Yep.
Well, there's been things that have come maybe by mail or something that end up on there. I don't see your phone calls. I don't, I don't know about.
Yeah, and I guess if we have anything like that, we'll just now make sure we put everything to agenda.
Like a just slap it on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not missed.
Okay, so that's fine. Now, let's see here. So are dates and time, we need to make a motion on that or is it just have a general conversation we'll want to? We'd have a motion on dates and times of meeting.
You guys can just, I mean. Or you can just choose, uh.
Well, I agree. I think let's try the first Tuesday at, we're gonna do nine thirty?
Yep, nine thirty, let's uh make a motion that the first of every two, or first Tuesday of every month, be nine thirty AM meeting. And then the following Tuesdays of the month will be evening meetings starting at six PM.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, I think we've got, oh, yeah, some of those things, like it's on the agenda I didn't talk about.
So you talked about claims.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have those at least twenty-four hours before we vote, even if we have to wait another week if it doesn't make them late. Uh, just to really look at them better. Uh, I know they may be available, but there's a way to send those out by email. Versus coming to get them. Is that, is that something possible for the auditor's office to do? Just the claims or if we want to have a week of claims. Put those together and some scan them in or something. We can look at them before the meeting, at least one day.
Um, I mean, we'll have to scan everything in, so you'll have that then.
If that's possible, it'd be nice to have us. We're gonna take time to, sometimes in a meeting when everything happens, it's hard to really look at those very closely. Uh, that's something I'd like to see. At least one day, I don't, I mean, it doesn't have to be a bunch. And if a bill comes the day before the meeting and it's done due for a month, you can wait a week, I mean, it's all right. Just to make it where we.
Pay them out, so.
Okay, just something.
And we can actually push that or, I mean, we push.
Just push it right there.
The only thing is.
And you don't write the checks until we sign.
We have to prove the claim.
Couple things. Every month you have first seat out or purposes. Every month we pick a couple that you, that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, so ones you bring to the board meetings.
So you would rather have them emailed and not brought up here.
Well, I don't care if you bring them, but but just it's, maybe if you have, if you're able to email them, we can at least look at them, so even in the meetings, a lot of times, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out what they are. If you could, if you could scan them, we could look at them and then we'd already know what it is. That would be nice, if that's possible. Uh, oh, public comment, that's not a big discussion here. We'll have a lot of other time. I kind of doing it today that way anyway. What do you think about that, Todd?
Yeah, so, um. I've been to a lot of uh other board meetings where they've at least had some public comment before they vote on an issue. Um, especially something that might pertain to the public that they want to sound off on, so. The way we've done it in the past on this board was to have public comment. Um, just set at the beginning of the meeting, um, there may be items and things that come up during the meeting. And then public is not allowed to comment on it. And so I felt like it should be at least. Maybe it's only a couple minutes, but they should be able to at least, if they have a comment on it before we vote. So we have that open dialogue with the with the public. Uh, and we're not just sitting up here as a Gestapo, pass, you know, running everything and nobody has any say or nobody feels like they're engaged.
Right.
Um, so. I would, I would like to see as we go through the agenda, being able to, before we vote on certain items or maybe all of them, but. At least have a couple minutes opened up to the floor if somebody has a, on that particular topic. Um, it's not a free, you know, come up and rail, but um at least be able to uh maybe make a comment.
Add them, yeah.
Like, like what we did today with the board of health. I think that was nice to be able to have that conversation.
You don't have to sit there and be like, I want to talk, I want to talk, but you can't.
Yeah, yeah, we've sat where you are and so. Yeah, so anyway, but I I, you know, it just again, to try to get this board back to some stability or civility and. Being part of making sure that the county residents feel like they're part of this board.
Right.
And uh, so I think that's very important.
Yeah, so like we, like you're, like you're talking, I'm kind of thinking the same way, like if we. Right now, it's a five minute time limit. Well, I I don't want to keep stopwatch on anybody ever. But we have to run order the meeting, so I thought about saying the word suggested five minutes. People, be reasonable, you know, if you got six minutes, it's whatever. I'm not gonna keep stopwatch. It's not gonna be that, but but suggested, we all know, we gotta keep moving, we gotta respect each other. And uh, and then like, like I said, maybe a two minute, if we have something that normally nobody's here, that's very normal that no one comes. If somebody's here, then. It's okay with me if they got an idea, maybe they thought of something we haven't thought of. That happens all the time, so. So kind of a suggested five minute beginning and maybe like a two minute before we vote on something if anybody has a concern, suggestion. If they want to throw something else, I kind of like what we did today, exactly what we did today. Uh, I'm okay with that. There doesn't need to be a hard line. And we have to be respectful of each other, uh, but.
And like I said, as long as it has to do with that topic.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want you to get up and say, well, two topics ago, I want to keep talking, you know. So once we vote, it's it's going to pass or fail or whatever, but we'll move on, but. I do think it's important to have that feedback as we're, as we're going through, cause we're making decisions that impact everybody in this room, so.
So that, I like that idea. So on public comment, I don't know what, this is just kind of resetting our meeting, is all we're doing right now, how we're gonna run it. I like that. This suggested, not time limit, suggested, so you know we'd like you to keep it that, so then keep moving. And uh, suggested two minutes before we vote on things, if you have something to say, suggested to bring it up and play it, and we can hear it. And see if it helps, maybe shows us something we didn't think of, so. I'm good with that, you're good with that, so we'll send this on that. I don't think we need to vote on that, but that that sounds good to me.
And so. Sounds like we just.
On the agenda, just what it says on there. It's another agenda thing.
Yeah.
But we're talking about it, so. And we can't talk outside of meetings. We've got to do it here. I'm sorry, Cory.
And as, as we list items on the agenda, maybe you put in underneath those, you know, two minute deliberation or.
Or put it at the top, they put it at the top, or just you have to write it a hundred times.
Yeah, see, not write a hundred times, yeah.
Before a vote, you can have an opportunity to say something.
Yep.
Maybe put that suggested two minutes in discussion. When I say discussion, that would kind of open it up maybe.
Right.
So two minutes suggested discussion, public comment.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I like that. All right. I think that kind of reshaped the meetings a little bit and our agendas, and I'll get some of those ideas I wrote down here to Melissa and see what she thinks on. Some of these things, so okay, uh, the next item is fourteen. We have, uh, there was an action, I looked, take this away, I put this on as an action to bring it back. With the minutes, wait, I forgot, on the minutes, okay, I talked about this a couple weeks ago, and I've done more research, a bunch of papers here. I looked up Robert's rules and all these minutes, all these boards I'm on. And I I printed all it out, we can talk about that. You probably already know this, but our minutes are written kind of with a lot of discussion in them, a lot. And and so in the, I've all those things I looked up in the Robert's rules, discussion is not. Doesn't have to be there, and especially since it's hard, you can't put all discussion. You can put a line here and a line there, it's impossible to put it all. And with what item fourteen is, so most of the board to monitor, all the action, the action items, minutes are very short. It's it's, uh, I mean, who who was here? I mean, the correct way, maybe the dollar amount, any resolution and that stuff, but the action item, so. We talked about newspapers being expensive. Well, if we go ahead with fourteen, if we resume, we already do audio now, but if we resume video also for all the public. We put that link in our minutes, just the bottom of it, so anyone can get on and watch the entire meeting and hear all discussion. So it'll be very transparent, but maybe save a lot of money on what it costs for the newspapers.
I think the one thing I would question you on is your. Written minutes are your official minutes.
Right.
So even if you have these zooms or these recorded items, twenty years from now, when those all go away.
Yeah.
These, I mean, and I think some other electives could speak on this, but sometimes we go back five, ten years to find something in the written minutes, and if they're not in there. Um, it didn't happen.
Right.
So I mean, that that's the one thing, I mean, I need to see that put in all discussion, but sometimes none of that's relevant to illustrate. What was actually.
Right, and I I've liked looking back at the minutes, but now that I've settled the board with minutes, it's. It might even twenty years later not be super accurate, not that anybody's trying to make an accurate, but you you cling to one line and discussion. That's why discussion is. Robert's rules is kind of caution of minutes, because it can be, it's not the complete story. If you don't have a video or audio, really. So I think that's why I've read, I didn't know this. I've read all the rules. I wondered why all the other boards are different. None of them, I've, no minutes are written in the way we do with all the, it's kind of like a story. It's written like a story, what happened and. If we want to dictate it like in a courtroom, well, that's fine, but that would take us, be crazy, it'd be way too expensive and. I don't know, it's just something to think about, cause we're talking about the newspapers, expensive, and also. Instead, if you pull, pull a quote here and a quote there and put them in, and then there's all kinds of interaction in between. It's not the full, the official record then isn't very, isn't complete. It's kind of, it's kind of cherry picked. Even if you're trying to do your best, I would hate to keep minutes. It's not fun to keep minutes, especially trying to do discussion. That'd be very hard. Uh, that's something to think about, especially. That's something to think about, especially what we're dealing with, newspapers, and we do have ability to make it, I think the audio and the video is better, you know who's talking and follow better, are such a uh huge resource, I view to remember what I said, I go back and watch it.
Right, but that might be something you wanna reach out, I completely vote counsel about too, because until they change or approve video recordings or audio.
They won't be our official minutes, we have official minutes.
But I'm saying, we want those to be the official.
No, I don't, it's just, it's just a surface. It's to show transparency, so our official minutes will be the minutes that we approve every week, and all the other boards I said on are action items, in fact, no, no no, and names, a lot of names of things don't need to be in there, names of people and things, comments, it just needs to be the official business action of the meeting, so.
I think you do actually have to keep track of who attended.
Well, attendance, but I'm saying there's certain, I have, I printed all Robert's rules stuff off, and I was reading over. We can reach out and look into that, but let's just continuing discussion here, have a way to help with the newspaper clean everything up, and then also often, which is nearly fourteen, a service that anyone can watch anything and hear all the discussion, and fully understand what's going on. As a service.
Yeah, and so is there, is there a way though with the, so what we release to the newspaper could be I don't know, an edited version of just the line item facts of what's been talked about, and then you could put in there.
No, you have to publish it.
Oh, you have to, okay, so there's no way of saying, you know, if you would like to see the whole list of minutes, go to this webpage or something.
Unfortunately, right now, legislation doesn't allow that.
Okay.
Last something to keep working on, what we can work on next week or whatever, it's just something to think about, because we do have, we're spending what, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars here in minutes. And I'm not trying to not make minutes complete, I wanna put a video up so everybody can watch every single thing that happens, because when you have the complete story it is way better than just a piece here or a piece there, you read the newspaper, so, uh, so I guess we can keep thinking about the minutes, we'll reach out, look at the right format, and any adjustment we can make. But on that, but we are gonna do something, I would like to myself. Bring back up the video recording and upload of the supervisor meetings to the YouTube channel, and have the IT department do that. Uh. My wife has currently been doing this at home, uploading it to another YouTube channel that, so Paige County, just so we would have this record. Uh, but I'd like that to come back to be a more done by the county, managed by the county official thing, so. You have any thoughts on that, Todd?
No, and Corey, there's nothing that's hindering us from doing that, it's just, we just need to go back to doing it for the, for the YouTube. Well, what's my?
We had. Broadband that was.
Okay, but that's.
Hours.
Yep.
So, and if it takes a few days, you have to wait a while, it isn't happy up the next day, I mean, just as long as it's, whenever. So, it's okay.
Oh, nice, okay.
And like I said, if it's a big, long budget meeting, and you need to wait a few days, it's not that big a deal, as long as it goes up, and uh
Yeah, I've.
Because the newspapers wouldn't come out for a while after we turn them in anyway, so they'd be able to see the meeting, as long as it's been a week or two, probably. Okay, well, that, uh I have a motion on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'll make a motion that we get the YouTube channel up and going, and broadcast our meetings.
Yeah. Everybody's welcome to uh, go to our, once this gets going, our, the Page County YouTube channel, and uh, we'll be able to see the meetings in completion. Okay, that, oh, I second that motion, sorry. I'm not used to being in the chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, we have the last thing there. Few years ago, I put this on there, there is a, Chuck had put on a wind energy discussion panel video on our website, and I opposed it then. I don't remember if I was on the board or not, I think I was. Uh, my feelings on that, not necessarily about what it's about, but there's, there's, there's for-profit people on there. Uh, I think all of them are for profit, I know it's, and we shouldn't have something that's for profit on our county website. Uh, things that are, people giving their opinions on their business. We should stay neutral and anything that's for profit, that's just my thought, it should not be on our county website, no matter what it is, no matter what's down. So that is something that has bothered me, because it is kind of a infomercial, we should not have those on public government websites, so what do you think, you have any thoughts on that, Todd?
Yeah, no, I, I, I didn't even realize it was still on there, so, um, I would love to take it down, I mean, I don't we don't have an opposing view on there, we never have.
And it's not on the website.
So it's, right, it's not me, it's not something that we should be uh promoting or not promoting.
Right.
Um, so. Yeah, I would, I would make the motion that we take that down.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's not. Who, long name, Marty, okay. You're brand new, you didn't have a communication.
No, um, I, like I said, uh in our new, our new agendas, I, I think it would be helpful, is if we took time to discuss what we thought maybe would be on the agenda for next week at this time. Um, since we don't get to communicate outside these meetings, um, to use the board communication, um, not just saying what, you know, repeat, you know, um bringing back what you attended and.
Right, a little more.
A little bit more about what, hey, what might be popping up for next week's agenda, what we need to discuss. Um, I think Marty bringing up the pipeline, I think that probably needs a little bit further discussion.
Yep.
Um. I'm not as familiar with when all the budget meetings start happening, and how that all plays out.
Yeah, we gotta get calendars out, whenever you want, Melissa, we gotta look at that, so.
Um. But uh.
Should we do like a new business, old business, or something?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that would be a good, you know. The one thing too, going back, I hate to go back to, to what we were discussing about the agenda, but that would be kind of nice too, to have old business. So maybe there's something that we need to finalize from last week, or the week, previous week, um, that we can go and address. And then at the end, um, under board communication, we talk about new business. Um, and what, and at the same time too, somebody may have something in the audience that they want to, hey, can you guys be thinking about this for next week?
Right.
That's, that's a great time to bring that up.
Right.
Um. And then we can discuss it, we can make notes about it, and then if we wanna turn that in as agenda items for next week, then we can do that at a, you know, later time, it doesn't have to be set right there, but um, at least we have some communication between us.
It's very odd, it's very, under, we can't talk, so we haven't tried to do it here, and it's odd to work out how to get things all figured out, so. So, uh, that makes a lot of sense.
Do you, um you both are gonna be gone next week on the eighteenth and nineteenth, correct?
Yes, yes, it will be.
So it'll be, then we have Tuesday, uh, oh, for budget, we're talking about budget. I had a calendar.
Yeah, so Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, this is the week, Tuesday night, Wednesday, Thursday, um.
Yeah.
Be back Thursday evening.
So.
I think that's my biggest days that are gone, I think. And Todd, what time do you get off work today?
Um, it, it depends, usually it's two thirty, three o'clock, somewhere in there, I can get off, um.
If it helps Todd, as our way, we could do like afternoon budget meetings, like if he could get here as early as he can, and do a couple hours every day or something, like try to, like what time is five when they close them?
I'm sorry, what?
Four, four hours close to five, four thirty. If we could do that a little bit too, and help, and help you out.
I mean, we can, should help, it's probably gonna be a couple days, he's gonna have to be.
Just be all day, yeah, they're long.
Yeah, that's fine, I just, and I just need to know ahead of time, so I can.
Some of those ones, we do like just a couple people again, and bring them back in, we can do some afternoon stuff, maybe.
Yeah, do you guys wanna look at your calendars, that if you have those days?
Yeah, we can look at that, just wanted to give you the days that kinda won't work, and then you plug in around, that just tells us when, what works and how.
With the twenty-third for, for interview.
I think so, the twenty-fifth, I gotta go to one of the, well, unless, I don't think we have anybody yet, I've gotta go to a, a meeting. For the, go into the open, no, twenty-third will work, I think.
Like during the day, on the twenty-third, I will not be able to, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I'm scheduled for a team at work.
Okay.
So I will not be able to get off, get out of that, but that's, that's one of the reasons I was, the email that we got for the twenty-fifth.
Oh.
I was not gonna be able to attend that.
I can do that.
Okay. How about the next week, January thirtieth?
I don't have it on the thirtieth.
Next week would be, yeah, the thirtieth would be.
What day of the week is that? I don't have a calendar.
That's a Monday.
Monday. Yeah, I don't think, I wrote down some dates this morning, I don't think I had any trouble there. Do a big budget day on the thirtieth.
Yeah, we'll start at eight thirty.
Yeah.
Go the majority of the day.
Yep, we can do that.
And then you guys are gonna have a night meeting the twenty-fourth. Do you want to plan?
We could do some more, if there's not much on there.
Do you want to plan to come in that day, just have another day meeting to knock out a lot of these?
On what day?
The twenty-fourth.
I cannot, for twenty.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, the twenty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first?
I, I gotta hold my.
Yeah, the thirty-first should be fine, I think.
So then we could do two big days there, in nineteen, that'd be good.
Uh, potentially, we need the first as well.
Okay.
Or would you rather space it out a little bit, or?
I think a little bit, what's the first is, yeah.
True.
Maybe we do those two days and pick another, we pick another day after that, doesn't hurt anybody, we'll just do two big days and then pick a night.
And then why don't you guys keep some of those days open, because we're gonna need to keep moving on the budget.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty well rolling, I think it should be fine, the February second's a statewide meeting.
Okay.
Know that, I don't know if we're going or not, just wrote that down.
Keep the first open, and so we're just planning, like, what did?
First of February, okay. Okay, that sounds fine, if that's something going there. Uh, the board, I emailed back to the VA board, I don't know, did you get that email, did you see that email?
Yes, I planned, I planned on attending Thursday morning, yeah.
On the D cap board, uh, I'm gonna attend for Chuck by Zoom today. For, 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 and there's a fourth additional on the twenty-fifth on Council Bluff, if there's nobody here, I'll attend that too, so. That's what I have. For communication. That'll make sense. The minutes, I read over the minutes at home, I had no problem with them myself. Thank you for coming in there.
Thank you.
Uh. You take a minute, read them, we have planes in there.
Um, I don't think so, it's on the agenda. No, but I did read through all the minutes, I thought they were fine.
Yep.
So, at least they know this.
To make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and the minutes from the previous meeting approved.
I second that motion, all of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.